Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session on May 14th, May 22nd, and this evening, May 28th, to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, and real estate. And student confidentiality. Roll call please.
Mr. Calabas?
Here.
Mr. Calabas?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Tim.
Approval of the minutes. Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes: April 30th, regular board meeting, May 7th, Education Committee and Policy Committee, May 14th, Facilities Committee, and May 22nd, Finance Committee. We have a couple of student features tonight. Oh, I apologize.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm on soft words. Off the line.
school. The GLA has long been active in both the community and altered the school in volunteering many services. I would like at this time to introduce Mrs. Rose Shroud, who will introduce the new sponsor, who will then introduce the president. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. White, for the introduction, and thank you, School Board, for allowing us to present some information about the club that I'm so pleased and honored that I've been involved with. As many of you know, I will be retiring at the end of this school year after forty-two years in education. I must say, I have thoroughly enjoyed being a part of the Plum High School staff for the past thirteen years and being sponsor for the Girls Leaders Association for the past twelve. For...I'm going to truly miss all my classes and all the activities that we're involved in, but that's an entirely other story. For those of you not familiar with GLA, we are a service club that raises funds or provides services for those in need in our schools or in our community. Tonight, we have a photo story we would like to share with you that will give you a snapshot of our nearly fifty projects that we are involved with throughout the year. We are also fifty-one years old this year, and I venture to say that that probably is the...I know it's the oldest one at the high school and probably is the oldest, not only in the state of Pennsylvania, but probably in the whole country. So at this point, we're going to see a photo story and get an idea of some of the activities that we are involved in throughout the year. I'm going to deal with the lights here so that it's better to view the photo story. We start out in August with our summer meeting. Ms. Special will tell me that we need twenty-five girls at open house for GLA, and next day, Money we make from the bead sales contribute to the needy in the community. Plum Food Pantry is one of them. I don't think the mic is working. Breast Cancer Walk proceeds go to the Pennsylvania Breast Cancer Coalition. It's not working. Laird Cemetery is one of our pet projects you just saw a picture of. We sponsor four blood drives throughout the year. I think my voice is loud enough you can hear without the mic. (Music) We set us to deliver a little wood so that everybody in that Super Living Facility has a plan set up for their dresser at Christmas time. We also care of this year the milk market at a Super Living Facility there. Provide stockings also with toys and gifts for the Plum Food Pantry. We also do charity, Lindisland Sport, Super Living Facility in Norville. And a bunch of four blood drives throughout the year. And we have superheroes that donate regularly. Father Darrell's Sports Night is an opportunity for our girls to get involved with their fathers. Play volleyball, badminton, do relays, and have a fun evening with our dads. Flyer Cell raises money for veterans. Usually contribute three and four hundred dollars to the local veterans post nine-eighty. We send regularly every year items over to the soldiers to Afghanistan. Every teacher gets a little appreciation gift at the end of the year for their support throughout the year. From our banquet. Ms. Martello is our assistant sponsor who will be taking over for me next year. I'm so pleased to have her with us and to continue the good work of GLA.[546.66][546.66](Applause)
Can you hear me now? Okay, there we go. As I was saying, Mrs. Shroud has been an inspiration to not only myself but the students. I've learned a lot these past two years as an assistant sponsor. So I think I'm ready to fill these shoes that she has created for the last twelve years, leading our girls into many projects that have benefited our community. And I already know that working with Danielle Hayner, who is our president for the club next year, will be working alongside me with a whole bunch of other girls in our officer club meetings and monthly group meetings as well to take GLA to different heights and incorporate some fresh ideas with the direction that they would like to go into for the new leadership. And without further ado, I'm going to lead it over to Danielle, our new president.[624.73][624.73](Applause)
Good evening. My name is Danielle Hayner, and it is my honor to have been elected incoming president of the Girls Leaders Association for the 2013-2014 school year. I'd like to tell you a little bit about why I am proud to be part of this club, not only as president but as an active member. First, just a few weeks ago, as Mrs. Shroud mentioned, we celebrated GLA's fifty-first year of service in our community at our annual mother-daughter banquet. During those fifty-one years, we have been blessed with two wonderful sponsors, Ms. Marilyn Bott, who started the club, and most recently, Mrs. Rose Shroud. Also, for the past two years, we have been blessed to have a wonderful assistant sponsor, Mrs. Amy Martello, who just spoke, and who, as she mentioned, will be taking over for Mrs. Shroud next year. But aside from the club's longevity, GLA stands out because of its service-based mission. The teenage years are often a time of focusing on and developing one's own self and identity. However, GLA helps girls to think beyond themselves to their community. As a member and officer of GLA for the past three years, I've both witnessed and taken part in many of the twenty-five-plus projects, actually closer to fifty, that GLA completes annually. Some of these projects, as you probably saw in the photo story, include blood drives, senior care center visits, collections, fundraising for worthy causes, and many others. And recently, GLA was also awarded grant money to help in our community, which we're using to help in a garden for the Senior Citizen Center. Through these projects, GLA prepares its members for their futures by developing their leadership skills and instilling in them a desire to help others. In fact, many GLA members continue to participate in community service long after their graduation. In these ways, GLA prepares Plum High School girls to be the community leaders of tomorrow.
Is Haley here? I guess not. Okay, I'll keep her certificate. I believe that she must have written an essay, although I'm not really quite sure what this award is all about. I thought perhaps she could explain it to you. But at any rate, we do have a certificate for her, and we'll make sure that she gets it.
Our next presentation is, I'd like to ask Coach Bernie Puchka to come up for the
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the girls' basketball program here in Plum. For the 2012-2013 season, the Lady Mustangs finished with an overall record of seventeen and six and qualified for the WPL playoffs for the fourth season in a row. Behind me stands a player...well, in front of me. All right. Behind me stands a player that played a vital role in our success this past season, but first, I'd like to recognize a player who wasn't able to make it tonight. Senior Angelina Borelllo. Ange is being honored tonight for her selection to the Cager Classic All-Star Team. Ange was a four-year starter for us and was known for her shooting abilities. Sometimes, what was unique about Angelina was she was the first young lady in Plum history to qualify for the WPL playoffs in all four years that she played. After graduation, Ange will be attending Slippery Rock University this fall. Okay, on to the second young lady, Junior Krista Petropola. Krista is being recognized and honored tonight for her selection to the Fab Five East Section Pittsburgh Post Gazette Team, First Team Valley News Dispatch All-Stars, First Team All-Section, and Trib Fab Five. How about a round of applause for Krista? Krista has been instrumental in our success, and she is being highly recruited at the Division One, Two, and Three levels. As her coach, I'm really looking forward to watching her score her thousandth point next year. And as a Lady Mustangs, for all the accolades and honors that Krista receives, it couldn't happen to a better person. I'm honored to coach you, Krista.
Before we move on to the citizens' comments portion, I'd like to read three additions to the agenda that you have in front of you. Facilities. Item A-10, recommend approval of corrective right-of-way easement from Toro Development Company to the Plum Grove School District at O'Blockt Junior High School for consideration of one dollar. Additionally, Education, C-7, recommend approval of the Student Transportation Agreement with James Doyle for the 2012-13 school year as presented. Item C-8 in Education, recommend approval of the Extended School Year Agreement with Grade Point Resource for the 2013 summer program as attached pending solicitor's approval. I read these before we make citizens' comments, as citizens can make comments on these.
Thank you. Before we move to the public comment portion of the agenda, I would like to note the preliminary budget is not an agenda item and is therefore a non-agenda item, and comments related to the preliminary budget are to be held until the non-agenda comment portion of the meeting. In recognition of the anticipated number of citizens who may want to comment on the preliminary budget, we will ask for public comment on agenda items and then move to the business portion of the meeting. Non-agenda item comments will be taken at the conclusion of the business portion. The total time for public comments beyond the business portion will be limited to two hours per Policy 903. At this time, we'll entertain comments on agenda items. Again, any citizen comments on agenda items? The agenda, please.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Shane McMaster's chair, recommend approval to advertise for an RFP for high school chiller tower number-two compressor, teardown, and inspection.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to award custodial supplies for the 2013-14 school year to the following vendors as listed.
I'll make that motion to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to award the trash removal and recycling bin to Green Ridge Waste Services as doing business as Allied Waste Services of Scottsdale in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty cents for 2013-14 school year.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve to pay construction expenses as presented.
That motion to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to dispose or sell used and/or obsolete items as presented.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Could you speak up, please? We cannot hear you. And I can move down from back end. I need to hear you, please.
Chris, if you could turn the microphones up, it'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to name the library in the new Holiday Park Elementary School, Adelaide Stevenson Library.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept an agreement with Doug Walter Auction and Appraisal Services for a liquidation auction at Adelaide Stevenson Elementary School as presented.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept, with a roll call vote, the Act 34 Resolution as presented. I'd like to read a brief excerpt from the information, it's all posted on the web. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes for the new Holiday Park Elementary School a maximum building construction cost of thirteen million eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty and a maximum construction cost of twenty million eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. That was first, obviously, a minimum cost of fifteen million and a max cost of twenty million.[1335.46][1335.46](Music)
Yes. Yeah, motion, sir.
Yes.[1339.46][1339.46](Music)
Now, we got...you should have them both. How's it sound? Sound?
Good.
Recommend awarding the Adelaide Stevenson and Bateman Development Project to A.W. McMahon LLC at a cost of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just briefly, the budget amount to do this project was eight-hundred thousand dollars. The budget was two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. There's a six-hundred thousand dollars savings on this project.[1374.01][1374.01](Music)
They're working on the savings.[1376.01][1376.01](Music) Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to direct right-of-way easement from Toro Development Company to the Plum Grove School District at O'Blockt Junior High School for a consideration of one dollar.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just briefly, the budget amount to do this project was eight-hundred thousand dollars. The budget was two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. There's a six-hundred thousand dollars savings on this project.[1392.01][1392.01](Music)
They're working on the savings.[1394.01][1394.01](Music) Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept, with a roll call vote, the Act 34 Resolution as presented. I'd like to read a brief excerpt from the information, it's all posted on the web. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes for the new Holiday Park Elementary School a maximum building construction cost of thirteen million eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty and a maximum construction cost of twenty million eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. That was first, obviously, a minimum cost of fifteen million and a max cost of twenty million.[1407.01][1407.01](Music)
Yes. Yeah, motion, sir.
Yes.[1411.01][1411.01](Music)
Now, we got...you should have them both. How's it sound? Sound?
Good.
Recommend awarding the Adelaide Stevenson and Bateman Development Mission Project A.W. McMahon LLC at a cost of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just briefly, the budget amount to do this project was eight-hundred thousand dollars. The budget was two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. There's a six-hundred thousand dollars savings on this project.[1425.01][1425.01](Music)
They're working on the savings.[1427.01][1427.01](Music) Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of directed right-of-way easement from Toro Development Company to the Plum Grove School District at O'Blockt Junior High School for a consideration of one dollar.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee met on May 14th, 2013. There will be no report this evening. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 19th, 2013, immediately following the Food Service and Nutrition Committee meeting and the High School Board. Personnel Committee, Mr. Sal Colle, the chair, recommend approval to accept retirement of Alan Ford, bus driver, effective June 6th, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee met on May 14th, 2013. There will be no report this evening. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 19th, 2013, immediately following the Food Service and Nutrition Committee meeting and the High School Board. Personnel Committee, Mr. Sal Colle, the chair, recommend approval to accept retirement of Alan Ford, bus driver, effective June 6th, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept retirement of John Zapata, bus driver, effective June 15th, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept, with a roll call vote, the Act 34 Resolution as presented. I'd like to read a brief excerpt from the information, it's all posted on the web. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes for the new Holiday Park Elementary School a maximum building construction cost of thirteen million eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty and a maximum construction cost of twenty million eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. That was first, obviously, a minimum cost of fifteen million and a max cost of twenty million.[1489.01][1489.01](Music)
Yes. Yeah, motion, sir.
Yes.[1493.01][1493.01](Music)
Now, we got...you should have them both. How's it sound? Sound?
Good.
Recommend awarding the Adelaide Stevenson and Bateman Development Mission Project A.W. McMahon LLC at a cost of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
They're working on the savings.[1509.01][1509.01](Music)
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept, with a roll call vote, the Act 34 Resolution as presented. I'd like to read a brief excerpt from the information, it's all posted on the web. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes for the new Holiday Park Elementary School a maximum building construction cost of thirteen million eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty and a maximum construction cost of twenty million eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. That was first, obviously, a minimum cost of fifteen million and a max cost of twenty million.[1522.01][1522.01](Music)
Yes. Yeah, motion, sir.
Yes.[1526.01][1526.01](Music)
Now, we got...you should have them both. How's it sound? Sound?
Good.
Recommend awarding the Adelaide Stevenson and Bateman Development Mission Project A.W. McMahon LLC at a cost of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept, with a roll call vote, the Act 34 Resolution as presented. I'd like to read a brief excerpt from the information, it's all posted on the web. The Board of School Directors hereby authorizes for the new Holiday Park Elementary School a maximum building construction cost of thirteen million eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty and a maximum construction cost of twenty million eighty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. That was first, obviously, a minimum cost of fifteen million and a max cost of twenty million.[1548.01][1548.01](Music)
Yes. Yeah, motion, sir.
Yes.[1552.01][1552.01](Music)
Now, we got...you should have them both. How's it sound? Sound?
Good.
Recommend awarding the Adelaide Stevenson and Bateman Development Mission Project A.W. McMahon LLC at a cost of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following part-time career support specialist at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars an hour with weekly hours not to exceed twenty hours, effective May 29th, 2013, Skylar Hill, Shawn Rose.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following part-time career support specialist at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars an hour with weekly hours not to exceed twenty hours, effective May 29th, 2013, Skylar Hill, Shawn Rose.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Jared Conley, summer technology technician intern, effective June 7th through August 25th, 2013, at a rate of seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour, not to exceed two thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Jared Conley, summer technology technician intern, effective June 7th through August 25th, 2013, at a rate of seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour, not to exceed two thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to follow medical leave act. Jason Cooper, biological chemistry teacher at Plum High School, effective May 10th, 2013. Sylvia Bucci, health professional at Plum High School, retroactive to May 20th, 2013, through the end of school year.
I'll make those recommendations to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to follow medical leave act. Jason Cooper, biological chemistry teacher at Plum High School, effective May 10th, 2013. Sylvia Bucci, health professional at Plum High School, retroactive to May 20th, 2013, through the end of school year.
I'll make those recommendations to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following listed candidates for the summer activities program, beginning June 10th through 27th, Mondays through Thursdays, as listed.
I'll make that recommendations to the board. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mr. Joe Tomarela, the chair, recommend approval to accept a photographer agreement with Viggly Own Photography for the Plum High School yearbook for 2013-14 school year at no cost to the district as presented.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following listed candidates for the summer activities program beginning June tenth through twenty-seventh, Mondays through Thursdays, as listed.
I'll make that recommendations to the board, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mr. Joe Tomorela Chair, recommend approval to accept a photographer agreement with Viggly Own Photography for the Plum High School Yearbook, two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, at no cost to the district as presented.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Agreement at Morris Home for Youth for Out of District Special Education Services as presented.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Agreement with Delphi Education for Elementary Education Services as presented.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval-
Accept the fifteen hundred dollar donation from Regency Park PTA for the purchase of iPads.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following overnight field trips as listed.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the in-plum proposal as presented.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the student transportation agreement with James Doyle for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year as presented.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the extended school year agreement with Grade Point Resources for the two thousand thirteen summer program as attached, pending solicitor's approval.
I'll make that motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Dr. Glass, could you just give the audience a brief explanation of what it does, how many kids there are in the program, and who staffed the program in the past?
Prior extended school years for special education students who need wraparound services over the summer so that their skills and knowledge don't regress. Prior to, not last year but the year before, all of these students were outside of the district and outside LEAs or institutions. Last year, we brought a program in-house and it was partially staffed with district employees and then partially staffed with outside employees. This year, the second year of in-house program, we moved the program over to Pivik Elementary School and the program is for those students who deem necessary as per their IEP.
Thank you, so we're going to use an outside source to staff this?
Correct.
Okay. So it's outsourcing for some of our children?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The Education Committee met on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. There will not be a report this evening. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June fourth, at six PM in the PHS Boardroom. Finance Committee, Mr. Kevin Dal Dal Chair, recommend approval of the Treasurers Report and Bill Payments for April two thousand thirteen as presented.
On behalf of the board, I'll make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Delinquent real estate taxes and fees collected by Angie's and Price for April two thousand thirteen, total amount collected, eighty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Recommend approval to accept the May budget transfers as presented.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the corrective action plan for the State Auditor General Performance Audit Report for fiscal years ending June thirtieth, two thousand seven through two thousand ten as presented.
I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a seven hundred dollar donation for the Plum High School PTSA to purchase library books.
I'll make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to thank them very much for that donation.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept three two thousand thirteen real estate tax assessment appeals for parcels numbers seven thirty-three S one seventy-five, seven thirty-four C three oh five, seven thirty-four C twenty-six.
I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Homestead-Farmstead Tax Relief Resolution of two thousand thirteen fourteen school year.
I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can we just get Mr. Maricini, do you have any numbers, Gene, on what it means to us, the Farmstead-Homestead exclusion this year?
For the Homestead-Farmstead, the reduction is going to be about two hundred and eight dollars. That's the actual value of the reduction, but the assessment exclusion will be a little over eleven thousand. We had seventy-nine hundred and sixty-nine qualified applicants and as Mr. Schlegel goes through, he finds that there's three veteran, two property tax owners that have a primary residence and a rental that was qualified, so a couple of those will have to go out. And because the assessment exclusion has risen into the eleven thousand dollar range, here he has about forty-one properties that'll be below the assessment level. So we're going to need, and he just called me late this afternoon, so the Homestead-Farmstead will move by a couple of pennies and a couple of dollars. So it has grown from about seventy-six hundred when we first started to do this program, so there's more people getting aboard. And again, there's no income, no age, no residency qualification, except it has to be your primary residence.
Thank you.
You know, we have very few people who have not applied, but in case they have a few, Mr. Maricini, could you tell me what the date on that is? You know, is there a date for application?
Yeah, it's the first of March.
First of March, and that would be next year.
Yeah, they would not be able to qualify for this year, only for next year. And you only have to do it once. Once you've done it, you're done.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The Finance Committee met on May twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. There will not be a report this evening. The Finance Committee Budget Workshop is scheduled for Thursday, June sixth, two thousand thirteen, at six PM here in the High School Auditorium. The next regular Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, immediately following the Facilities Committee meeting in the High School Boardroom. Policy Committee, Mr. Rich Zucco Chair, recommend approval to accept the following policies as listed.
On behalf of the Policy Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The Policy Committee met on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Zucco will make this report.
Not too much to report. We've been going through these policies, looking for anything that needs revised or updates through the guidance of Dr. Rossi. And as you can see, every month, we seem to get a couple of these policies done and we will continue to do so throughout the course of the year. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand thirteen, following the Education Committee in the High School Boardroom. Transportation Committee, Mr. Tom McGuff Chair, there will not be a report this evening. Athletic Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger Chair, recommend approval to hire Bernie Puchka, eighth grade girls' basketball coach, at a stipend of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Megan Davis, Assistant Senior High Cheerleading Coach, at a stipend of two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The Athletic Committee did not meet this month. Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Ms. Loretta White Chair, the Food Service and Nutrition Committee will meet Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, at six PM in the High School Boardroom. Intergovernmental Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger Chair, Mr. St. Ledger will make this report.
Thank you. Yes, we met earlier this month with the members from the council. We continue to work on issues that come up. Just wanted to inform the public that effective immediately or as soon as the council decides, the fire zone outside the high school is a no parking zone and it will be ticketed if you're parking in that no parking zone. We're working together to sort out the details of the reassessment and we continue to work on our security and operations plan with the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. John St. Ledger Representative, recommend approval to accept with a roll call vote the two thousand thirteen fourteen operating and administrative budgets for the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center as presented.
I'd like to make that recommendation to the board, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zucco?
Yes.
Mr. Colella?
Yes.
Mr. Dal Dal is absent, Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. McMasters is absent, Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
And Mr. Tomorela?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Recommend approval to accept the two thousand thirteen fourteen Revenue Anticipation Note for the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center as presented.
I'd like to make that recommendation to the board, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. St. Ledger will make this report this evening.
Thank you. Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the certificate ceremony last week. We had about a dozen Plum graduates. Also, ten of the twelve students there achieved the National Technical Honor Society Honor Roll. And congratulations on those accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Loretta White Representative. Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, just, it was a very short meeting. Graduation is June fifth at seven PM. We do not have any Plum students graduating, but it also is the same night as Plum's graduation, so I won't be able to attend. However, there is an end-of-the-year picnic at Hawkeye Park on June seventh and we were given information about summer work projects. The next meeting will be June twenty-seventh and we will be reviewing the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Policy Council, Mr. Sal Colella Representative. Mr. Colella will make this report.
Just one thing, we have a new Secretary of Education, Ron Tomalis, has resigned. And one of the things that's coming out, there's quite a bit of debate in Harrisburg about the Common Core standards. So hopefully, at the Education Committee, we will be reviewing those and take a look at the impact it has on our school district. That's the only thing I have, Dr. Glasspool.
He's a graduate of West Point?
Yes.
Thank you. Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGough, Board Member. Mr. McGough will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. I have several items and they're all grant-related. The first is a new grant competition which will award one hundred fifty thousand dollars to libraries, museums and other nonprofits to provide hands-on learning opportunities this summer for youth across the country to help make the online experience more civil, safe and empowering. And then there are also smaller grant opportunities available, U.S. Airways, Fuel Up to Play Sixty, which is a nutrition and activity-based grant, ASM K-12 teacher grants, No Kid Hungry Program and the RJK Foundation Grants, which will give awards up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And so I'm pleased to see that one of the programs that the AIU sponsored, that Plum is very actively involved in that and I just want to commend our administration, our teachers, for actively engaging in this. And I also wanted to use this as a segue to see if we were able to find out anything about the, something that we had taken from our budget meeting last week about the nonprofit education foundation here for Plum.
Yes, Mr. Maricini and I have spent some time on the phone with the IRS and we've got our application filled out. We have some back taxes to pay and right now, we're trying to determine what the amount of the back taxes are because if we have to liquidate the account or more with back taxes, we may just reapply. But our application has lapsed. However, we hope to have some information next month for sure.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
Thank you. President's Report, Mr. Andrew Drake. Mr. Drake will make this report.
Thank you. In May was Teachers Appreciation Week. May was also Teen Self-Esteem Week. We had a very busy month for testing, star assessments, keystones, finals and AP. The senior high production of Seussical received six nominations for Gene Kelly Awards, which were presented May twenty-fifth at the Ben Adam Center. Nominations included Best Actor, Connor Cook, Best Ensemble, Best Show, Best Orchestra, Best Scenic Design and Best Costumes. The students were very excited to perform onstage at the Ben Adam and represent our districts at these celebrated awards. Plum won the best costume design for Budget Level Three for Seussical. Thank you for all coming to see Seussical, supporting their efforts and be sure to congratulate the students when you see them. June is Child Vision Awareness. June is also Student Safety Month. Parents, please be sure your sons or daughters have the proper protective equipment when they are working at the summer job or around the house. Many summer jobs have hidden safety hazards and they should make sure they understand the work to be performed and have the appropriate protective gear. High school graduation is June fifth at seven PM and the board extends our congratulations to all our graduating seniors. The last day of school is June sixth. This is a full day of school, no early dismissal. Kennywood Day is June eleventh. As school is coming to a close, we remind our residents to drive carefully as more students will be walking in our streets during the day and evening. The first day of school for two thousand thirteen fourteen school year is Monday, August twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, recommend approval to accept the Superintendent's Report as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Couple announcements this evening. Plum Grove School Picnic at Kennywood, as you just heard, is June eleventh. Gates open at ten thirty AM. The new Holiday Park Elementary School Act Thirty-four Hearing is scheduled for Thursday, June twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at six PM in the High School Auditorium. Information is already posted on our website. The regular June Board Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, at seven o'clock PM here in the High School Auditorium.
Thank you. At this time, we will entertain public comments on non-agenda items. We will remind the participants that the comments are limited to five minutes. The comment period is limited to two hours. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Beach. I'm a nineteen seventy-nine Plum graduate and a two thousand eleven distinguished alumni inductee. I'm here this evening on behalf of my family and friends who cannot attend the meeting because of health challenges and because of the students. I've been a weapons systems analyst for the Defense Department for nearly twenty years and I'm very familiar with budget battles. However, I am concerned about what is on the cutting room floor with regards to Plum's budget. Bottom line is that I care about the students and I care about their education. So allow me to give you a different perspective on a broader picture of the implications of your decisions. The United States is losing its manufacturing base, not only because of labor rates, but because of a dwindling engineering talent pool. The technology program reinforces engineering skills and teaches students to apply their math and science knowledge. The excitement of this program is that the end result is that the students actually build something, they physically build something. Many countries, this one included, fail to communicate with others well and as well as not working well with others, countries or cultures, even within their borders. The TV production teaches not only media as a communication tool, but enables teamwork and develops listening skills. Listening is a very important part of communication. It's a given fact that there is a B.C. problem in the U.S. with a medical system that's about to implode. Family consumer science educates students on diet and nutrition so future generations do not have this issue, no matter what kind of medical system we have. Most doctors, scientists and other people in analytical fields are also talented in the arts. Why? Because the arts nourishes the creativity side of the brain. Creativity fosters innovation and new inventions. Also, a recent study has showed that young students exposed to music did better in math than students who were not. By cutting each of these areas, as well as the other electives that I do not have time to comment on tonight, you are contributing to the brain drain and diminishing professional talent in the U.S. You are depriving the students from receiving a balanced education. And let's talk about balance. The Defense Department does not gut one department or service to fill a gap but cuts or balances across all of the departments in order that they can still do their mission, that is to protect the United States. It is obvious to an analyst that balance was not in the equation in this budget's construct. And so I ask that you consider these points that I briefly covered in your ongoing deliberations and take a long, hard- And so I ask that you consider these points that I briefly covered in your ongoing deliberations and take a long, hard look at the impacts of your decisions beyond the district's boundaries. And I'd like to close with a quote this evening from Benjamin Franklin, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Thank you for your time.
Dr. Beach, thanks for coming up this evening. I appreciate it.
Uh, good evening. My name is Tom Grandy. I live at 1501 O Block Road. And I'm here, um, to support you to review your decision about the Boys Campus Middle College. It's a very important program for those students who wind up going to the college. As you know, or I hope you know, these are students basically at risk who have problems here at the high school, and, uh, whether it's attendance, or bullying, or whatever. You've heard many of these students over the last month tell you how important Boys College, Middle College is to them. And I, I support their need for this, and, you know, sort of what was just said a minute ago. When you look at this budget, there are two major programs that you completely cut out. And that was Boys Campus Middle College, and it's the ROTC program. And, you know, again, I've worked with budgets in my previous life, and we never totally cut anything out. It was always looking at where you can take 5% here, 10% there, not 100%. And I think you have to really consider the impact of not only these two programs being totally gone, but when you look at your budget and you see that there's a million dollars taken out of teachers' salaries, where are we heading? You know, where are we heading in this borough? I mean, I've lived here over 40 years. I've never had a problem with the schools. You know, I have three children that graduated, have grandchildren that are going to school here now, and, uh, and one that's at the Boys College. He's currently a junior, and again, you heard all of these students tell you they need this school. And they are not going to survive in Plum High School. If you talk to those 17 students that are remaining there after the seniors graduate this year, the sophomores and juniors there now, 17 out of 17 will tell you they don't want to come back here, because they know what it was like and why they wanted to leave. And so I think it's very important for you, as a group, when you go back and hash over this budget and look at what you've done, that you reconsider totally cutting these programs that have meant a lot to a lot of people. And one of the things that, that I would like to close with is right out of your own mission statement. The mission statement says, "The partnership with students, parents, and community is to achieve excellence in education by preparing all students to take their place in the diverse and changing world of the 21st century." If you're going to cut out all of the programs and reduce all of these programs that you have currently done in this budget, where's the diversification? You're going to have students coming here, and they're going to take core courses, and what other choices are they going to have? Study hall all day? Would you like that? Again, please reconsider some of these drastic cuts, and look at where you can take 5%, 6%, 4%, so that you can total up the money you need. And one last comment, uh, Mr. Colella mentioned that, uh, one of the programs that you approved tonight is going to save $600,000 from what was budgeted. I'm presuming that's capital budget, so it won't have any impact on the operating budget, correct? Okay. All right, so thank you for your time, and again, please reconsider the drastic changes that you were pushing through, because I think it's going to hurt this district for many years to come. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas Stone. Okay?
Hello, my name is Ed Eckert, 260 Lanin Drive. Uh, someone once said that brevity is the essence of eloquence, and I assure you, I'm going to be exceptionally eloquent tonight. I actually had to engage in some bribery to be here now, because I do have an engagement. I do not attend these meetings frequently. In fact, I think Haley's Comet visits the Earth more frequently than I come to school board meetings. Uh, the last was to present Rick Volker with an award, but I'm here tonight, uh, to provide you with a perspective that I have regarding, uh, programs that may be at some risk. And that's the, uh, Mr. Barat's, uh, Video Productions Program and also ROTC. Uh, just briefly, my, uh, my son, for example, graduated in, uh, 2001. We have been residents of Plum for 34 years. Chad, uh, has his PhD in Biomaterials Engineering. He had opportunities at the Naval Academy, MIT, Berkeley, chose to State University of Pittsburgh, and was exceptionally well-prepared, uh, as a Plum student. Uh, so you and your predecessors really should be congratulated in somehow providing quality education for a multitude of students as they pass through this system. Chad being no exception, nor my other two children. Uh, but I, I do have to say, uh, I'm, I'm a businessman in Plum, a great deal of experience with the Department of Energy, and more recently, the National Institutes of Health, and, um, presentation skills are vitally important. The ability to distill information and present it in a cogent manner, uh, and not to mention, uh, knowledge of the technical aspects of, uh, communication are vitally important, and sometime can make or break the game. Uh, and I see examples of both in Washington at the National Academy of Sciences and at the Department of Energy. Uh, and it's refreshing to see properly constructed and properly executed, uh, video presentations. I am firmly of the belief that Mr. Barat's program prepares our students to do that. Uh, my wife, who is deceased, and I have participated in the Make-A-Wish Telethon since its, their inception, and I'm just amazed at the coordination of logistics and so forth that, uh, that it provides, uh, our students. I received a, uh, an award from the Carnegie Science Center, and within two days of notification, it was a video team dispatched to my facility to, uh, to put together a, uh, 10-minute video. So it's, it's vitally important in this society, and from my perspective, it's, it's essential skills. Uh, which brings me to my second point, and that is leadership. Uh, I do a film on a work with the Navy in propulsion research, and it's refreshing to see good leadership. I teach occasionally at Naval Academy, and it's, again, refreshing to see good leadership. Uh, the ROTC program does provide that. I am, uh, familiar with some of the people that, that are responsible for orchestrating that program, and they are top-notch leaders. And so I implore you to, and you do have a daunting job, to, uh, look very judiciously at the cuts that need to be made, and to please preserve these two programs. I think that they are essential, and they prepare our students with life skills. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Eckert.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Herron. I live at 284 Lanin Drive. At last week's special voting meeting, I spoke, and then I sat and I listened to many other students, parents, teachers, and community members speak about their passions, which courses have impacted their lives, and what the proposed curriculum cuts will do to this community. Since that meeting, I printed out and reviewed the preliminary budget, and I wonder why so many programs will be eliminated when the administrators, the principals, the athletic coaches, the tax collector, and the solicitor, to name a few, are scheduled to receive raises. The bus drivers and the custodians have made concessions. I believe that the teachers' union has also offered a concession. If our priority is to achieve excellence in education by preparing all students to take their place in the diverse and challenging world of the 21st century, shouldn't everyone involved in the education of our children give a little bit? During last week's meeting, the seven board members who were present to vote were asked whether they currently had children attending any of the Plum Borough Schools. The answer was no. None of you has students at the junior or senior high schools, so you may not know that scheduling for the 2013-2014 school year began in February, and according to district policy, schedules cannot be changed after June 6th, the last day of school. And yet, based on the preliminary budget that was passed last week, schedules cannot be finalized. Some students will lose up to a third of their scheduled classes. What about the incoming seniors who plan to visit colleges this summer to meet with the admissions counselors? Those with aspirations to enter the world of broadcasting, technology, business, and early childhood development will be missing key pieces of their education. They will be missing courses on their high school transcripts that may give them an advantage when competing with other students during the admissions process. Past generations of Plum Borough children received a well-rounded education. Why should our children be any different? For those of you who voted to approve the preliminary budget, have you looked past the numbers in the report and considered the fallout? Cutting teachers from the electives will bump others from the core classes they teach. Those being displaced from the elective courses, who have dual certifications and more seniority, will now be learning a new curriculum in the core subjects. Many may need a learning curve. Can the district handle that many new teachers in core curriculum courses and continue to meet the state-mandated Keystone Test Course? If you are sitting up there with an agenda of anything other than working towards providing our children with the best education possible, then shame on you. And shame on us for electing you to the school board. You need to work together with the teachers to balance this budget without sacrificing the education of our children. The preliminary budget that five of you voted to pass last week will cause irreparable damage to this school district now and for future generations. We are here to remind you once again that these curriculum cuts are not acceptable.
Good evening. My name is Beth Forrest Kiss. I reside at 397 Holiday Park Drive, and I am a Plum graduate. My first thoughts when we were notified, the potential cuts to the Plum Borough School District for 2013-14 was, wow, this can't be so. I kept thinking, it's not possible, not Plum. Then reality sank in. Yes, Plum. I've lived here practically my entire life and graduated, as I said, from Plum. My husband and I decided we wanted to make Plum our home after returning from Washington, D.C. to raise children, and you ask why? Plum is that someplace special you read about, wonderful community, great place to live, and to raise your children, and the Plum School District. Please understand, this took some convincing on my part, because my husband wanted to return to Mount Lebanon, where he was raised and attended school. We've been happy with living in Plum Borough for the past 21 years, and we've always trusted our elected officials. However, I can't stay silent. I have a son, Ian, who is a junior and will be a senior at the high school next year. And as a taxpayer and a member of the community, it's time for you to hear how I feel. I understand, in today's society, everyone needs to take a look at their budgets and their bottom line. I do this on a daily basis in my profession, and it's not without great thought in negotiating between the parties involved. Plum is a growing community. We want to see it to continue to grow. However, if we're looking for a home today in Plum, would I consider it? Probably not, if I looked at what the school district was doing, and the classes and the electives, and the direction it was going. For the past two years, Ian has been part of the TV production program at Plum. He does the play-by-play for Plum football and basketball. He works on the Make-A-Wish Telethon, participates in the Plum Lip Dub, and takes time out of his schedule to film and work on projects, as Mr. Barat has asked him to do so. It's not because he feels he has to, it's because he wants to. He wants to represent the school and the community. Because of these experiences, Ian has decided that he would like to attend Waynesburg University. We did a visit there this past spring and met with Richard Kraus, the head of the Communications Department. When he heard that Ian was from Plum, he said, oh my, what a wonderful program the TV production is. Your students that come in from Plum are the best we've seen and the best program we've seen in the state. Why? It's all because of Mr. Barat and the time and effort that he takes to teach the students and to communicate, and that's what we need. Waynesburg's excited about having several students be attending there in the fall. And I feel that's what kind of praise is that from a university that speaks highly about Plum Borough? Students who've graduated from there have gone on to become hosts of their own television shows, ESPN Sports employees, and working in other programs in the television marketing. If you would cut this program, Ian would potentially, along with the others, incoming seniors, lose a year of experience that they need when they go into looking at the colleges they would like to attend and the programs. The work the TV Production Department does for the community is remarkable and very much appreciated by the residents. Many of the events and activities they film are placed on the Plum Channel for the residents, for Plum to watch. Plum is an older community, and many of our students are, and our residents are unable to attend these events and activities. But the work the TV Production does allows those who cannot be involved to be involved by watching the happenings of the community and the district. Make-A-Wish alone and all the national attention Plum receives each year for that effort, I really can't see that the district and the directors would want to see that go by. What the other cuts Plum wants to make disturbs me, because not everyone fits into your cookie cutter, college academic-bound programs that'll be left off to our students. There'll be no diversity and options for students who do not fit into your cookie cutter district you're heading towards. If these cuts are made, that's what's going to happen. The arts and musics play an intricate part in the well-rounded student. If we continue with the cuts and not negotiating compromises, what will be left? To sustain the music and arts, it starts when children are young. It grows, and it keeps growing in a progressive upward manner, from elementary school to high school. Again, if you make those cuts, the trickle-down effect won't happen, and it will no longer have a music department. Just take a look at the six nominations they got for Seussical, and for the awards the music department got while they've participated in Festival Disney in March in Florida. To the teachers, I support each and every one of you. Realistically, in today's economy, you need to step back and say, do I really want to see my 24 coworkers' positions be eliminated? And what can I do to see this doesn't happen? My hope is that each and every one of you have thought about the decisions you're about to make, and it is the best decision for Plum and the students. We want to see Plum continue to grow and we, and be progressive. However, I do not know if Plum will continue on this path. It appears we are regressing, and that's not to benefit the students or the borough.
Ms. Warkis, you have five minutes if you could wrap up your comments.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a shame how this is being played out in the community and the media. Each side needs to put their pride aside, get to the business at hand, and to work through the situation to make the best decision for the students, the community, and the district. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Warkis.
I know we may be sounding like a broken record, but if that happens to be the only way to get the point across, then I think we'll all continue to be here. Um, good evening. My name is Lily Stuklin. I am a junior-
Excuse me, could you read your name and address, please?
Yes. I'm Lily Stuklin, uh, 141 Peppery Drive. I'm a junior in a prospective film major. And as I'm sure, sure you can assume, I'm here to discuss the possibility of student electives being cut. I ask that you please pay attention, as I am a student, taxpayer, and in four months, a legal voter. I know that recently, the student body has not had a very positive view on the school board, and I remind you that the, wait, I remind you that the young voting population is the most valuable, as we are directly affected by the decisions made here. Moving on, I would like to defend specifically the TV Productions courses available here at school. As you are well aware, every year, the TV production classes bring in the most positive publicity our district could ask for in the form of the Make-A-Wish Telethon and the Penguin's Lip Dub. These two broadcasts boost our school's reputation and put our name on the world map as a leader in both Make-A-Wish fundraising and hometown spirit and pride. Simply put, to take away this class means to take away from our school's reputation. In addition to a loss in reputation, the elimination of the class would also result in a loss of student passion. As an honor student, I maintain a high GPA in all my classes, but as in my electives, most notably TV, that I am most proud of the work that I do. In TV, I am not only learning, but applying and creating. Since I was in elementary school, I have been told to follow my dreams, and while many students choose to go into a math, science, or core class-related field, my dream is to go into filmmaking, as it to me is a modern form of literature. As a prospective film major, the knowledge gained in TV productions gives me a head start into college and the competitive entertainment world. I can even earn college credits through the class if it were to be available to me next year. To lose the opportunity for college credit would mean more student debt and less of an advan- advantage going into college for me and all the prospective film and communications majors at PHS. Sarah Houghney, a 2007 Plum grad and mutual friend, recently told me of how the TV Productions class has made her realize and continue her passion for film and how it could actually become a career. In 2012, she graduated from Point Park University's prestigious film school. On average, the program receives around 350 applications, and they only accept around 90 a year. She's currently living in LA and pursuing her career in screenwriting, and she still uses what she learned in Plum's TV classes to help her in her day-to-day job. I would also like to quickly defend the other possible electives to be cut, JROTC and Family and Consumer Science classes. JROTC is, in many cases, the only exposure students get to possible military careers. It has helped 2012 Plum graduate Ian O'Donnell choose his career in serving our country. The following is a quote from my conversation with him last week. "The Plum JROTC program has greatly influenced my life. It has led me to a job where I can serve and protect my country and benefit myself as well as others. It is the program that made my high school career memorable and led to friendships with many amazing people." Ian is now stationed in Texas in the Air Force as an Airman First Class. Ian is now stationed in Texas in the Air Force as an Airman First Class. And last but not least, I would like to defend the Family and Consumer Science classes, and most notably Ms. Prokopik's position in particular. Nutrition and cooking are valuable life skills that many students lack going into college and life. Ms. Prokopik's class provides students with those skills to live and lead healthy lives. In addition to the valuable knowledge she teaches in class, Mrs. P. also teaches students to have safe and active lifestyles in her sponsorships of both the SAD and SNOW Club activities. SAD and SNOW Club together have the largest student club membership with over 100 members combined, and Ms. P. dedicates her time to these clubs every year, making sure students have access to outdoor activities and smart decision-making. She is one of the most personable teachers I have had the honor to get to know these past years, and she is clearly one of the most passionate and dedicated teachers in the building. It would be a shame to see such a great educator and leader leave on account of a class being cut. In conclusion, elective class cuts would lead to a loss in school reputation and student passion. Less classes would lead to larger classes and therefore less teacher-to-student interaction. I believe that I can speak on behalf of the student body in asking that you can reconsider your decision to eliminate school electives. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments, Lily.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Stepanek. I live at 3020 Settlers Court. I'm a mom, a Plum resident, a school board candidate, and I'm, first of all, I'd like to start out by saying I do know that the decisions you make are very difficult up there. But I can't help but think that this wouldn't be this difficult if you didn't transfer $2.5 million to build another school on the backs of our children's education. And in addition, I'd like to thank all of you because I had a lot of homework this past weekend. I did get my information from my right to know, so this is my binder I carry around to keep reading, and I combed through the budget. And this budget has a ton of fat that can be trimmed out of it. First and foremost, not one single person should be getting a raise, and shame on you if you take it. And most importantly, your contracts, your outsourced contracts are a disgrace. I'd like to spend a minute or two on Kelly Services. That's what I'm going to focus on tonight. This temp agency now gets another $20,000 bump according to your proposed budget. It already gets $32.40 per day per substitute teacher. And what's even more absurd is that we even use them to fill a long-term subposition when someone's on maternity leave. That's well-known. That time is put in months ahead of time. We can't figure out how to fill that in our district, instead we just spend the money aimlessly. And I did, by the way, make a little highlights list of the budget, and also on the back thanking our school bus drivers and our teachers for what they've done to help balance the budget and what they do for our community. I'll be happy to share with all of you if you'd like a copy. Sorry about that. And the only thing I could say is with Mark Kelly Services after going through hundreds of pages is that our fill rate is no better than it was before them. All we've done is just spend more money, money that you could be using to save programs, to save jobs. Our children are relying on you to make the right choices. And I hope as the weeks go by, and you continuously hear pleas from our residents and our parents of our children, that you actually will sit back and rethink this, comb through this budget, cut the fat out of it, cut your own pay raises. And if your conscience still allows you to go ahead and vote for this budget, then here's where my school board candidate comes in. I challenge each and every one of you to spend your summer and the first weeks of school helping these teachers and these students rearrange their schedules so that they can feel as if they're being productive in school, not just sitting in a study hall. And I'd ask all of you to go and do that. If you're going to create this mess, then find a solution to fix it. Don't just sit up on a stage, roll up your sleeves, and work.
Um, hold up, sorry. Before I begin, I want to apologize if I come off a bit strong, but you have to understand the confusion and anger that I'm feeling right now, so bear with me.
Could you state your name for our record?
Oh, I'm getting there. Hold on. My name is Kellyanne Hamilton. I live at 122 Duquesne Boulevard. I attend Voice Campus Middle College. I just want to say thank you to the people on the school board who voted against cutting any program. It means the world to us. However, to the people on the school board who thought it would be the wiser decision to cut BCMC and electives, I just can't understand why. I hope you realize that by cutting these programs, you're altering our futures and ripping apart and ripping up a special bond we have with each other. When I graduate, yeah, when I graduate high school, I plan on going to Anyock University to become a criminal psychologist. If BCMC stays available, I will be able to take psychology classes for free while still attending high school classes, which will make it easier for me to get accepted and make my college experience easier. The cuts you are making are not worth it, but we as students are. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Stepanek.
Hello. My name is Kelsey Guesrich, and I live at 123 Cherrywood Drive. I graduated from Plum Senior High School in the spring of 2012. I now attend Clarion University where I'm a reporter, news anchor, and producer for the Clarion University Television Station. Only four freshmen were chosen for anchor positions, and alongside me was another Plum graduate who was also a freshman. The Plum Television Production Courses prepared me for my experiences at Clarion by exposing me to the world of filming, editing, and producing in the field of broadcasting. Avid is the editing software that is used in the Plum Television Classes, which is also found in many television stations around the country. Mr. Barat works with his students to develop his networking opportunities, our networking opportunities, excuse me, to provide his students with the connections needed to find a career in the broadcasting field. Being a host of the 2011 12th Annual Make-A-Wish Telethon and a producer for the 2012 3rd Annual Penguins Lip Dub gave me more confidence along with the skills that have put me above and beyond my peers in college. Without these classes, I might not have chosen to pursue a broadcasting career. But with these classes, I was able to earn my first of many college credits needed to help me pursue my dreams. If this elective is eliminated, future students will not have the chance to experience such a technologically advanced class in broadcasting. With a high school career filled with advanced math and science courses, I still found myself pursuing a career path in this elective course. Please don't deny future Plum students of the same opportunity. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Christopher Frank, and I live at 208 Voice Park Drive. I am currently a senior at Plum Borough High School. I will be graduating in eight days, and this may raise a question, well, why are you speaking out about the programs at Plum High School? Since you're going to be leaving so quickly, why even bother coming to the meeting and fighting for the electives? My reason for coming to this school board meeting tonight is that I care about the future generations of students that come through your high school. For example, my brother, who sits right next to me, is currently a freshman and is looking towards the same opportunities for electives that I took while at your high school. Now, I support many of the electives offered through your school district. However, I will be focusing on two tonight. My first one is the junior high computer classes. Now, I believe that computer skills are very necessary for people in the 21st century. Now, I seem to remember the mission statement of Plum Borough School District, which I learned while at the junior high. One of the major points of the mission statement of the school district was preparing students for the 21st century. Now, I'm wondering how you're planning on preparing these students for the 21st century while cutting out classes that would teach them necessary computer skills that can be applied to any career that they go into? Computers are becoming vastly more important in the world, and I believe that cutting out classes that teach them these skills would be a terrible mistake to your school district. Also, I will be speaking out in support of Mr. Barat's Television Productions program. In the fall, I will be attending Point Park University for filmmaking, one of 90 students accepted this year. Now, when I was a freshman scheduling for my sophomore year, I didn't know what I wanted to do with my life, but I scheduled for Mr. Barat and Mr. Levaras' TAV productions classes. And three years later, I decided that I wanted to pursue that. That is what I wanted my career to be in filmmaking because of what Mr. Barat and Mr. Levaras taught me while at the high school. There is no way I would have ever chosen this path if it hadn't been for this TV productions course. And I think that all students that go through Plum Borough Senior High and the school district in general should have the same opportunities that I have had to find what they want to do with their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Christopher.
Hello. I'm Tom Frank, and I also live at 208 Voice Park Drive. I am a freshman at Plum High School, and I also play saxophone in the Plum Band, and I was also in this year's production of SUSACOL. And I am worried about the recent cut of the elementary band director position. Now, when I first brought up concerns about this, people seemed to think that these concerns weren't relevant to this cut because the high school band is also is still intact. But with the cut of the elementary position, the band as we know it will soon, will most likely soon dissolve. Without an elementary band director, the students in elementary school will be deprived the opportunity to pursue learning an instrument in fourth, fifth, or sixth grade. So by the time that they are able to take this course in junior high, they will not have three years over any, over students in a lot of elementary schools. But there will also be a lack of students joining the band due to loss of interest because they didn't have the opportunity in elementary school. Plum has been regarded as having one of the best bands in the area and has performed at many festivals, including Festival Disney this past spring as well as many other years. This has been, this can be credited to the band directors at every level, the elementary, the junior high, and the high school. Now, without, without any of those levels, the band will not only suffer, but most likely cease in the future due to the lack of students joining and the, and the loss of years of experience if the program isn't cut by then anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, Tom.
Hi. My name's Michelle Zanatelli, 9320 Salzburg Road. I'm back to see you folks again. I'm here because I think that your budget proposal needs a lot of work. I know you've been working on it since March, but you should have really been looking at this last year in August. I am very upset with some of the cuts that you want to make. I think these people have a lot of good points on different things that you want to cut. I have a daughter who graduated from here. I didn't go to Plum. I didn't want to live in Plum, but I moved here because I thought this was a pretty good school district. My daughter graduated. She had four years of ROTC. She's good leadership. She took her college credits that she earned through that program, and she didn't want to do that. She decided, she did ROTC down at Pitt, changed her mind, and now she wants to be a surgical nurse. You know, that's a kid. That's what you get. I have a nephew who graduated from here with the ROTC program that people have been trying to get out of this school for many years. He was shot over in Iraq, I mean Afghanistan. He is recovering right now, and he wants to go back. He learned that through here. He learned that through the Army. He learned to be a leader. He was a wrestler for this school district. I mean, he was everything. And you want to get rid of it. There's a lot of different things that you can get rid of. There's a lot of things that you can cut. I don't understand why we need assistants, assistant principals. I mean, there's other areas that you can look around, and I've been asking you people to do that for a long time now, to look. I don't, if we're going to pay a teacher to teach a study hall, have them have a class. I tried to fight with you people when you wanted to get rid of Home Ec over at the junior high, which that was a shame that you got rid of. I do have a student over at the junior high right now, and I think he's missing out on a lot. He's learning a lot, he's losing out on learning about nutrition and different other things that these teachers were teaching them. You had Home Ec in school. What did you think it was, just sewing and cooking and that was it? They do a lot more. Those Family and Consumer Science teachers teach basic life skills, things that you already know, that you're too old to forget when you learned that. You learned that in school. These kids need to learn that in school. I'm just really disgusted with raises that you people are giving yourself. I feel like I'm with the United States government. Let's give us those raises and forget the poor people. That's what you're doing, and that's what you're showing these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Zanatelli.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Lobeg. I live at 1482 Greendale Drive, and I'm here to speak about the issue of electives being cut. I'm a senior here at Plum, and one of the things I loved most about going to school here was the electives, especially the Growing with Children program. Before my junior year, I wanted to be anything but a teacher. My mom is a teacher, and my aunt was a teacher, and I wanted to be totally different from them, do my own thing. However, my mom knew I was always great with children, and she insisted that I take the class just to see what it was like. So I did. In my past two years in that class, I discovered that I have a love for teaching that I never knew I had. Mrs. M. encouraged us and taught us how to teach the preschool children their ABCs, numbers, colors, and many other concepts. Not only did I realize that as I taught them that I loved teaching, but that I was good at it and that it was what I was meant to do. Without the experiences of the Growing with Children class, I probably wouldn't be going to Slippery Rock to double major in elementary and special education. Our electives here are necessary for students to find out who they are, what they are good at, and what they want to do for the rest of their lives. I have two younger siblings who will be coming up to the high school in the coming years, and I'm not sure how they're supposed to choose what they want to do for the rest of their lives or find out what their passion is. I want them to have the same opportunities that I did. So I ask you to reconsider your decision to cut the many beneficial electives here at Plum High School and to put the education of your students first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Kay.
Hi. My name is Macy Seng, and I live at 204 Red Oak Drive, and I'm here to also talk about you cutting electives. I'm now a junior, and I'm 17 years old at Plum High School, and I came into ninth grade having no clue what I wanted to do. And if it wasn't for Mr. Barat's TV program, I would still be standing here with one year left, absolutely clueless. Because of Mr. Barat and his TV program, I've, I have had opportunities working with the Pittsburgh Penguins and Justin LeVar. And next year for my senior project, he was going to help me job shadow Mike Clark, which has been another amazing opportunity. I don't do school sports, but because of his lip dub, I have been involved in school activities. It's an amazing thing he does, and it's brought this entire school together and made us all closer. Another thing he does is the telethon, which I was, I was very excited to be able to participate in next year, which you will all be taking away from me. Another amazing class I've been taking is Growing with Children. This is my first year, and it's been awesome. I'm not looking forward to being a teacher, but I have a younger sister who's in eighth grade coming to the high school who wants to be a teacher and was looking forward to this class more than anything, and you are also taking this away from her. While we're going around for TV assignments to other elementary schools, every little kid looks up to us with the cameras and cannot wait to be able to do this. This is something everybody looks forward to. Another thing you are taking away. I know it's a long time from now, but I was planning on raising my kids here and staying in Plum Borough, and this is not something I want to do anymore because of this. I have already scheduled my, scheduled for my senior year, and I took three electives, a study hall. In the days I don't have gym, I will be having another study hall, which now gives me two. I took TV, Growing with Children, and Foods, which you are cutting all three of them, which means on some days I'm going to have five study halls, which is absolutely ridiculous. I've always been glad to be part of Plum Borough. I've always supported it. I've always been very spirited. And now I'm sad to say, I'm not proud to be a part of the school at all anymore, and I find it very embarrassing. I'm speaking on behalf of many of my peers who are not here tonight, and if you make this decision to cut classes, I hope you all know you're making a very big mistake. Thank you.
Susie Dawson, 607 Regency. I'm not going to re-echo what a lot of these students are already saying, but I do have a couple of questions. One is STEM education, it's becoming huge in this state. I'm not sure how we're going to do that when we're cutting all of our computer and business programs. I'm also wondering why are we hiring computer support people today if we're cutting our computer program? That doesn't make sense. I have a son who will lose all three of his electives next year. Woodshop 1, which he's taking for a second time because he loves it so much, Woodshop 2, and TV Productions. two, and TV Productions. Not sure, but he's really thinking of cyber school. I don't like it, I don't want him going, but I guess there's probably going to be a whole bunch of more people going. As I told you last week, it could cost your district upwards to a million dollars or better to house those kids. Two more quick points. One is thank you to Zach and Alex and the other kids, Dante, whoever's back there, taping. I'm not sure who's taping your program next year. Who are you going to pay to put it on the cable channel because I don't think any of those kids are going to be back if their program is cut from the high school. Next, I just want to end with Sheldon Ingram came to my school last week on Friday for we do a morning broadcast with our fourth grade students in my classroom. He came to our school and the kids conducted the morning broadcast with him and also conducted an interview with him. One of the questions they asked him was, even though these are just little elementary kids, what is it that we, you would recommend us to do to be able to fulfill dreams of the future? And he spoke one word, and Mr. Barat said it over and over and over last week, passion. He said, find your passion, pursue your passion from the youngest age on up. My passion has been teaching. I knew when I was in elementary school and younger that I was going to teach. I'm still teaching, still loving it. Mr. Barat talked of that passion, Mr. Ingram talked of that passion. He said the earlier you find it, the longer you can pursue it. And he said by all means, above all means, when you get up into the junior high and high school levels, take those classes that will help you find your passion. Take that passion, run with it, get into college and pursue your goals and your dreams. These kids are going to be left without a passion to even look for with the cuts you're making. I would hope that you would reconsider and really find a way to not cut out these programs that are vital to these kids. They can't take five math classes, they can't take five study halls, they're going to go to cyber school and you're going to be out even more. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dawson.
Good evening, my name is Kristen Andreas, 205 Logan Year Lane. I graduated from Plum in 2004. Sorry, I'm short. I'm currently an eighth grade English teacher in a neighboring district, and so I understand the frustration with budget and restructuring of staff and classes. However, as a teacher and someone who is surrounded by children each and every day, I understand the importance of a class like TV Productions and a teacher like Mr. Barat. Classes like TV Productions and teachers like Mr. Barat help to shape our children's education, providing new avenues for learning and growth. I remember the first time I walked into the TV classroom. The construction was not yet completed, so it was this tiny room in the basement where we were all squished in like sardines. However, in spite of all of that, Mr. Barat immediately began to show the passion and love he had for this class. He knew how to inspire us in a different way than other teachers. He wanted us to use our imaginations and creativity, and he motivated us to think outside of the box. He opened an entirely new world to me and I am forever thankful for that. When the construction was finished, I remember walking into the new TV Productions classroom and the excitement radiated between all of us. The thrill of being a part of something this big was moving and special. I was very involved in many of the activities within TV Productions. I was an officer and I was also one of the hosts for the Make-A-Wish Telethon. Besides what this class has done for me personally, it has helped to change many of the lives of, in our community. Being a part of this exceptional experience has always made me feel like I made a difference, a real difference. If you take this class away, you are not only taking away new information from the students, but you are taking away the ability for your students to use imagination and creativity. You are taking away the ability to look outside of the box. You are taking away the opportunity to help others. And most importantly, you are taking away the chance to feel truly inspired. I haven't been in Mr. Barat's class for almost ten years, and I am still inspired by his passion and his love for what he does. I have taken that and applied it to my own teaching, and even though I am not teaching the same subject, I feel that I have affected children in a positive way because I had a role model who showed me how to do so. Students need this class and they need Mr. Barat teaching and inspiring them so that these lessons can be passed on to younger generations. Please find some other way to fix the budget without eliminating this class and others. Your students and their education are dependent on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Andreas.
Hi, my name is Samantha Meripice and I live at 112 Carriage Drive, Plum, PA. And I'm currently a junior at BCMC High School. I've been a Plum student since kindergarten. When I was attending Plum High School, I rarely went to school, nor did I have good grades. I received the opportunity to come to BCMC High School in the beginning of my tenth and eleventh grade year. I'd like to thank you for giving me that opportunity to spend my tenth and eleventh grade year with my BCMC family. Since I've started school at BCMC, I've had great attendance, I enjoy going to school, and most importantly, I've earned honor roll, high honor roll, and even distinguished honor roll for the past four semesters. Now that I realize that I love school, I want to further my education next year and take a CCAC college course. Also, after my senior year of high school, actually went to attend college. I would love to spend my last year of high school with my BCMC family. Your decision of keeping BCMC open or not will affect my life forever as well as all of my peers at BCMC. All of my friends that had to go back to Woodland Hills this year are no longer enrolled in Woodland Hills High School. It's sad to see that happen, but it did, and now all of those students dropped out or are looking for alternative options. If the BCMC program isn't around next year, I will not be returning back to Plum Senior High School. I will attend PA Cyber or a charter school, hoping that I could push myself through without the resources and support that I currently have. You would honestly spend more money on me doing one of those two options than spending what you're budgeting with BCMC remaining open. I'd like to thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I hope that you truly see what the BCMC program has done for so many of us and realize the second opportunity it provides for students that would otherwise not graduate from high school. Thank you, I'm worth it.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Hello, Michelle Gallagher, 114 Carrion Drive, 1990 Plum High School graduate. I'm going to start off by saying that the Plum Barrow School Board oversees the developmental, development of education for our community. When I walked in here this evening, there was a mom that I recognized from another school, very active in her commu, in her homeschool in the PTA, and she was talking about moving, maybe putting a for sale sign in her yard, and I said, you're not moving. The ironic thing is that there is a for sale sign in my yard, and it's sold, and the funnier thing is, I have chosen to continue to live here in Plum. It's not really funny because I am born and raised here and I love this community very much, and I'm committed and invested to be here for my children. And I know I've mentioned before that I do have a seventh grader, a fifth grader, and a second grader. When you look at the numbers in Plum Barrow, the median age from the 2010 census is forty-two. Roughly, we have five thousand students eighteen and under. So that's including some of the toddlers, some of the kids that yet aren't into the school system yet. So if my math is, you know, might be a little off, but you're looking at fifteen thousand people that you are affecting, the parent-driven community and the children. That being said, this evening, I am going to talk for my child at O'Blockt Junior High. We've heard a lot about the JROTC program, TV production, the high school programs. We really haven't touched on O'Blockt Junior High. And I am the president of the O'Blockt Junior High PTA, and last year, O'Blockt took a hit with the elimination of the Family and Consumer Science Program. And I don't know if all of you, or if any of you know, sitting on that board, that every single seventh grader had a study hall all year because of that cut. I know you're not allowed to answer, and I don't know if any of you know that, all year. Now, this year, the current cut list for O'Blockt Junior High is foreign language, computers, and tech ed. I know my son is very excited about being in the tech ed program next year. Next year, these eighth graders will ultimately have one full study hall and one half of one. Now, they've already had one this year where they sat, and they, they learned in there, they did their homework, they read a book because they have a very great reading program, Reading Hall of Fame at O'Blockt, very great literacy program over there. But they were in a classroom of maybe twenty-eight, thirty, maybe twenty-five students in that study hall. It was very manageable. Next year, when you have these eighth graders and you cut roughly six teachers from O'Blockt Junior High, some of these study halls may be between seventy-five students and a hundred and twenty-five. Now, where are you going to put them? Are you going to put them in the auditorium? Are you going to put them in the cafeteria? Are they going to get the same benefit? Are they going to do their homework? Are they going to be able to get that reading that we all have promoted at O'Blockt Junior High? And speaking of the reading program, I also want to make mention that what a wonderful thing it is that the partnership with our librarian that we do with the Reading Hall of Fame, and those kids go into that library every single day. Somebody is in that library and somebody is assisting them, whether it's the librarian or it's the librarian assistant or the aide. Now, that's my son. He is going to be affected for two years with study hall. That's two years of suffering and not learning something. Two years that he is not going to get something back. How long is it going to take to get these students that you are now going to push into the high school to get them back on track? I'm a proponent of saving all programs. When I first sat here, I thought, okay, I like this one, I like this one, I like this one. Then I thought, no, I like them all. You need to save them all. You don't need to pick and choose. You need to save them all. And to go a little bit on what Mrs. Hearn had said earlier, and I'll use the slang term, checkerboarding teachers. Twenty-one teachers. Twenty-one teachers teaching what they love, what they like. And now, you're going to checkerboard them all over elementary. Some of them are going to end up in elementary, some may end up in junior high. Again, they are going to have to relearn a subject. And who is going to suffer? Our students. Please reconsider your cuts.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, Ms. Gallagher.
Good evening, my name's Ed Albert. I'm a proud Plum graduate of 2008, and I grew up at 211 Fiesta Drive. I come here today in support of one of the elective programs on the cutting room floor, and that's Television Productions. But I also favor all of the electives because as it was just mentioned, some of the computer classes are being cut. And you don't get to become a news producer without learning how to type, and that starts in third, fourth, fifth grade with Mr. Damaski in Adley Stevenson Elementary School. It continues with Ms. Simony in O'Blockt Junior High, and it continues here at the high school where you progress those learning skills. It's little things like that that help progress you as a well-rounded student. I have a brother that currently attends Adley Stevenson, and he'll be moving on to the junior high school next year. And it's a shame to think that he won't be able to enjoy some of the electives and learning experiences that I got to, to enjoy at my time at Plum that he'll now be able to miss out on. He's very actively involved in the Strings and Orchestra program, and by cutting the band and orchestra programs, that is not going to further the education for the students at Plum. There's also a lot of talk about passion. When I walked into my eleventh grade Television Productions class, I didn't really have a passion yet, but thanks to Mr. Barat and a few of the other Television Production teachers in eleventh grade, I was able to find that passion and become actively involved in play-by-play broadcasting for the football team and also being able the following year to take part in one of the first television broadcasts in Plum of the WPIAL baseball championship in the Consol Energy Field in Washington, PA. Some of these experiences then allowed me to move on and be at the head of the class at Robert Morris University, where I was able to graduate a semester early because of some of the programs offered here at Plum High School. Allowed me to get college credit, including the Television Production program, to be one step ahead of those extra bodies coming in the door and really stand out from the crowd, and that's what a lot of Plum students are able to do with the opportunities that are provided to them here in Plum. You go back to passion. Now I am a producer in WJAC in Johnstown, and I still use things that I learned in the television studio down the hall every day, including how to deal with people, work as a member of a team, and typing. It's the little things that you don't think about when you make these cuts. I understand you are in a tough position, everyone is facing the budget crunch. A lot of people, I'm sure in the community, are facing it in their own checkbooks. But I don't believe the way to go about making these cuts is to make the students suffer. You have to have passion, and to make that go forward, you, you have to start from the ground up, and you can't just find that passion once you're walking on the football field and being handed your diploma. It's too late. You need to have that passion in elementary school. And you need to be able to find that at the junior high and in the high school. So I ask you to reconsider your decision here today that you'll be making, I guess, next month, uh, next month's meeting to cut these programs, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming back, Ms. Robert.
Hello, I am Brianna Zanatelli at 9320 Salzburg Road. I am currently a high school freshman, and as I heard many persuasive, like, speeches about these electives, I'm here for ROTC because not only did it help me decide that I actually do want to go into the Air Force maybe one day, but it also taught me good life skills, and it helped me in my history class. Not too long ago, we went to Gettysburg for a field trip, and I learned a lot there, and I used that recently on a history test that I had. I also learned a lot about an ROTC about the Civil War, which also helped me on my previous history test. So an elective really did help a core class. And in eighth grade, when I was talking to my sister about choosing an elective, I asked her which one she thought was best. She took four years of ROTC, and not only did she tell me that it helped her through high school, but it also taught you life skills, not just about the Air Force, but things you can use in everyday. And also, it's honestly quite boring standing, I mean, sitting in biology, just learning about the parts of the cell and what they do, when on ROTC, we learned what makes balloons fly. Previously this year, we made balloons from a garbage bag, some tape, some string, and a hair blow dryer, and we made them fly. It was one of the coolest things I've ever done. And the fact that upcoming students from eighth grade and seventh grade won't be able to do that, honestly, it breaks my heart. And next year, I signed up for survival. I find that would be a lot more helpful than knowing what the nucleus does in the cell. I would be able to survive, like, without technology rather than knowing that X plus Y equals Z. There's a lot of these, a lot of these electives teach you life lessons that core classes don't, and I think that's what important, that's what important about high school is teaching you how to survive whenever you're out on your own. Not just these basic things that everybody learns year after year. Like in English class, I've learned the same thing since, like, fourth grade. But in art, I'm learning so many more different things, like how to pay attention to detail. We had to draw a shoe at the beginning of the year. It sounded really stupid to me then, but the more I thought about it, the more I realized that drawing just that shoe, I had to really pay attention to detail and how everything was laced around, other than just knowing how to use proper terms in English. These electives really help you whenever you're dealing with situations that aren't just from the textbooks written down. Not do I think that core classes aren't important, they are, but electives are also important. And it's stressful when you have core class tests pushed on you every day. You might have a math test, English cla, English test, and a history test all in one day, but it's nice to sit back and do something fun in ROTC. And also through ROTC, I made a lot more friends. It's pretty hard personally for me to make friends. I'm not that outgoing, I'm not that, oh, hi there. No, but the fact that we all had a common interest and we all learned together to do, like, teamwork, it helped a lot. ROTC, every Monday's physical, it's PT, I don't know what it stands for, but we work as a team to play a sport. We play ultimate frisbee, and we divide the class into teams, and it's different every time, and we all learn how to work together. And we also do different things during drill. We learn discipline, and we learn just a whole bunch of stuff that you can't learn sitting at a desk in class. These electives are very important, not only for what you want to do for your job, but for just everyday life that you can't just read a textbook and find out how to solve the problem. You actually have to go out there and you have to think. And that's why I don't think you should cut the electives, because as much stress as core classes put on you, electives help you relieve that stress, and they also help you in everyday life, other than just reading from you in everyday life, other than just reading from the textbook.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up,媛媛.
Good evening. Donlin Check 170 Dinwiddie Drive. I'm here to talk about Aramark again. I know this is repeat. I hate repeats. I apologize for repeats, but there's folks out here that haven't heard this information. So for your edification, Aramark is the company that the school district has contracted with to take care of our facilities. When the contract started, we paid a hundred and twelve thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. This school year, we are now at a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. In 2013-14, it goes up to two-hundred-and-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. And at the end of the contract in 2014-15, the fee will be two-thousand, or two-hundred-and-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. And that's just for the contract. This year alone, we are paying seventy-four thousand dollars more in contract than we were for the salary of the employee that had that job before. Not sure where the money savings are. And we are also paying sixty-nine hundred dollars per month in supplies. And that's a lot of toilet paper in my book. And yet, our buildings don't have supplies. My colleague and I have asked for a list of the supplies. We've gotten a list of what can be ordered, but we cannot get information on exactly what is received for our sixty-nine hundred dollars a month. Now, if that, if I were getting a bill and it didn't list exactly what the cost was and exactly how much I was getting, I'd be calling customer service. You know, I listened for several years as Mr. Drake came to the mic and said he would take figures, right, Mr. Drake? And you said you'd put them in an Excel spreadsheet. I don't need an Excel spreadsheet to see that this doesn't add up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for comments.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Campo, and I live at 308 Boyce Park Drive. Remember me? I spoke last week at O'Blockt, and I was speaking in support of not one elective, but every single one, because this elective doesn't, or this decision doesn't affect me but the posterity of Plum. In the fall, I'll be at the University of Pittsburgh, taking full advantage of the wide variety of curricula and electives that they have to offer. But I must say, last week was the most disheartening event I've ever had the privilege of witnessing. It was disheartening because I felt like not one word that anyone said mattered. And with the exception of two of you, I did not feel like the board even paid attention to what I said. My mom always told me that education is the most valuable thing that you have, because no one can take it away from you. And while that's true for me, as well as past generations who graduated from Plum, it won't be true for future generations as you're taking it away from them now. With the exception of Mr. McGuff, Mrs. White, and Mr. St. Ledger, the six of you, and yes, I include you, Mr. Joe Tomorello, Education Chair, who do not even show up to voice his opinions on the cuts, you all devalued my education. By approving these cuts, you have rendered every hour of my life spent in electives like TV, AP Spanish, foods, tech ed, as well as my siblings' time in ROTC, growing with children, an elementary band, unnecessary. But how wrong you all are. I can honestly say that had I grown up without any one of these programs, my family would not be the same today. All three children in my family have found their future careers in electives. Mine came from a combination of Spanish, TV, and speech. My sisters came from growing with children, and my brother's passion stems from ROTC. And if you are under the impression that, okay, these students may have discovered their interest in our electives, but they wouldn't have been impacted if they didn't have the classes, you're once again incorrect. Just one example is, if my brother continues in the ROTC program, if he's able to continue, he can enter the Air Force with an E3 rank, which is levels above what other students directly out of high school can start. That program alone directly impacts his success and his career. Based on everyone else's personal stories, the statistics, and the fact that many of you had children and were children in the district, I can't comprehend how you're going to knowingly destroy the education children are receiving here. Education is not composed solely of grammar and math. It is acquiring the skills you need to be an adult in the world. Colleges want well-rounded kids. In fact, the University of Pittsburgh lists on their admissions website that they look for students with strong, well-rounded academic curriculum in high school, not outside of the classroom, in high school. They don't want to see students concentrated in one subject or who take five study halls. They want to see students exploring their interests. Mr. Daudell, who is unfortunately not here tonight, said in February, "It's a no-win scenario at this point. If we increase taxes or cut programs, people will not be happy either way. We want to minimize the number of cuts as much as possible." You can't tell me that twenty-one teachers, one librarian, one guidance counselor, and that the minimum six dozen, excuse me, six programs is the minimum amount of cuts. And you, Mr. Joe Tomorello, said that people will have to be upset to be fiscally responsible. But you all are upsetting the students. This is not the students' fault. In fact, we meet our annual yearly progress. My class has set record-high test scores, thanks to the wonderful teachers here at Plum. And so, what do we value more? Mr. Tomorello, as chairman for the Education Committee, are you willing to jeopardize the education of every child in the future of Plum? After all, you are so young, and you can surely remember the quality of education you received here. You were all elected to better and protect the school system. And if that involves making a few unfavorable choices, like raising taxes, so be it. I work and live in Plum, and know I'm just an eighteen-year-old, but I would be willing to give more of my check to ensure that future generations have the same quality education that I did. And I will be sure to vote for candidates that stand for the same education that I believe all children should receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Jordan. Thank you.
My name is Sue McConnell. I'm from 161 Spring Grove Road, from Penn Hills. And I'm here to talk about the Boys Campus Middle College and the fact that it is not on the budget, which really surprises and disappoints me. I'm really surprised. I had thought that there would not be a problem there at all. I don't think maybe you understand the value of that program to some of the parents and the families, or the kids themselves. Unless you're the parent of a child who is physically handicapped, you probably wouldn't think a lot about the lack of wheelchair ramps and handicap facilities in a school that your child would rely on in order to have access to the same education as everyone else, so that they could go on to live a productive and normal life. Some people's inabilities, though, are much less noticeable. Some kids have motor skill problems, or attention problems, or problems in their home life, or health issues that make it impossible for them to focus on learning fundamentals that are needed for them to progress. And so they fall behind and suffer from stress, they become labeled by their peers, and they overall, their self-esteem begins to erode. That's what my, happened to my son. He had a few motor skill problems and fell behind. And the odd thing is that if you knew my son, he's a very gregarious person, very smart, very interested in history and science, and so I thought was very intelligent. People told me all the time how impressed they were with his knowledge about history and science. And I was pretty shocked and upset when I found out at his school that he was failing. And not only was he failing, but his entire school experience was actually very dismal and unhappy. I had no idea that the person that was very happy-go-lucky at home was really miserable in school. He was put in front of the class, right next to the teacher, obviously labeled. He didn't have any friends. He didn't speak to anyone. On the way home, I found out, he told me point-blank, "I'm the dumb kid in the class," and he had accepted that, even though I knew that he was not dumb. And I think that this kind of erosion of your self-esteem is what can really ruin a child. He began to act out and head down a dark path. At the end of every day, there's stories on the news about kids that suffer from low or no self-esteem, and the terrible havoc that they wreak in their pain. So here we have this program in Boys Campus Middle College that's proven to work at fostering self-esteem and self-value. And I'm really surprised that we're not seeing that and valuing it. The whole middle college model is prized and valued. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Ford Foundation, the Carnegie Corporation of New York, and the Kellogg Foundation, all of these foundations who have done a lot of research to put huge funding behind educational solutions that work, have funded an almost identical model in the early college model, which is almost exactly the same. And it's because these models are successful, if you read about them, you'd see that. And they're valued in other states, prized and encouraged. And I feel like not much is understood about them. No one values them unless their child is in need of it. So I hope you'll rethink this, this item being part of the budget and the necessity of it for some of us that really have to have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Luke Jennings. I live on 3315 Franklin Drive. I'm currently a graduating senior, and I can honestly say I've had a fantastic experience here at Plum Senior High School. I'm very proud to come from this school district, and I make sure I showcase that wherever I go, whether it's at a track meet or with the musical. I'm extremely proud to be a part of this community. Cutting these electives would be a terrible mistake. You know, nowadays, colleges are not only looking for students who excel in the math, in the reading, in the sciences, they also want students who are going to be able to socially interact and be active participants in their own communities. Also, cutting the technology would be a terrible mistake. We live in a, in a world where technology is continuously developing. If we can give our students a head start in that field, that's, that's, you know, time and money that, that'll save them down the road. Not only are we competing with students when applying to college with people, with children in the United States, we're also competing globally now. We're competing with countries such as China and India who have, you know, an exploding education. And we need to start being competitive with them. And one of the ways to do this is to have, you know, programs that offer students to, you know, express themselves and be creative. Like, every day I turn on the news and, you know, you hear these statistics, how the United States is falling behind on education, and, you know, we need to pick it up. Cutting, cutting any class should be a last resort for this school district. You know, as an honor student, I did take some computer classes, and that has helped me, you know, throughout my school year. So I just, like, greatly encourage you to rethink this as you think we have to compete globally now instead of, you know, locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Luke.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Kramer, and I live at 1408 Greendale Drive. To start, I would like to thank all of you for the wonderful chances I've had in advanced and AP Math and Science courses. Throughout the past four years, with all of my challenging classes, I've needed a release. The electives at Plum High School have given this, have given me this release and made me the well-rounded person I am today. As a preschooler, I attended the Growing with Children class. From that moment, I knew I wanted to be a part of that class when I came to the high In junior year, when I, or sophomore year when I was scheduling for my junior year, I made the wonderful choice to take Growing with Children. And I can honestly say it was one of the best decisions of my high school career. Although I'm not entirely planning on becoming a teacher, I do plan to work with children and become a pediatrician. This class and Mrs. Matarazzo have given me so many wonderful opportunities to learn skills that will help me communicate with the patients as a pediatrician. I also had the awesome privilege of working with Mr. Barat in the TV productions this year. This allowed me to see how much hard work is put into the telethon and the lip dub and all the other various projects. The benefits of the telethon were outstanding this year and show how much our community is willing to help others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen.
Good evening. My name is Lori Berkey Stack, and I am a 1977 graduate of Plum High School. I also have a master's degree in education. In 1977, the Plum residents were very concerned with test scores and athletics. In 2013, it really hasn't changed. The residents still are concerned with high test scores and athletics. Without proper nutrition, well, the difference in 2013 are many students have to prepare their own meals, where in 1977, there was still one parent at home. These students today, both parents are often working, and they have to prepare their meals. We know with proper nutrition that their test scores and their athletic abilities will increase. It's a family consumer science program that will produce those students that have the ability to prepare their own nutritious meals. I feel the family consumer science program is essential. Please keep it in your budget. And I'm sure you'll see, the scores on the fields and the scores on their tests will increase.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Berkey Stack.
Hello. Kelsey Metzger, 123 Oak Hill Drive. Last week, I came and spoke on behalf of the electives, and I think we're all basically back here due to the preliminary vote. So when you think about the big decision, think about either your kids that are in the district or that have already went through it. You want the best for them, and you should want the best for all the students, because we elected you, and it's your job to do what's best for us. When I went through Plum, I wasn't exactly sure what I wanted to do yet, but the TV production classes gave me clarity. To be honest, without this program, I would have never chosen a career in TV, because I wouldn't have been exposed to it, as go for the rest of the electives. I learned how to produce a television show and news story ideas, something I do on a daily basis in college. I learned how to write a script, interview, use a camera properly, and edit using the advanced system Avid. I learned how to present myself in front of a large group of people with help of hosting the Make-A-Wish telethon. All of this was important to me because I chose a career in TV. And I can personally tell you, being two years into a broadcast journalism degree in such a cutthroat industry, every little step ahead helps. And Plum and Mr. Barat didn't just put me steps ahead, but miles. What about the students that don't choose a career in TV? What does it do for them? Because maybe you're just looking at the students who actually go into the industry, which for Plum is actually quite a few. But it isn't a waste of time for the students who choose other paths. Students learn leadership skills, a new way to express themselves, responsibility, proper speech, because some days, everyone's going to have to sit in front of a large group of people and talk. It is an individual class that inspires your ability to think creatively, but also work as a team, and they're all crucial life skills, if you ask me. With the honor experience given to me at Plum, I was able to become a reporter for the Point Park News Show. With the diverse experiences it gave me in class and the ability to learn on the go, I became just as knowledgeable behind the scenes, crewing and directing shows. With the confidence in myself this class gave me, I sit on the weekly sports show as an analyst, competing with three other guys, trying to prove my point. With this class, I learned networking from someone who I think we can all agree does it pretty well, Mr. Barat. With networking, I earned a spot in my practicum class on Justin LaBarre's wrestling show. And finally, with this class, I learned about motivation and initiative, and took some for myself to go out and get an internship in the industry this summer. They all seem like little things, but isn't it the little things that add up and count? Don't take away my siblings, future students, and friends that are still in the district opportunities to learn and thrive in the TV program, the ROTC program, family consumer science, technology, and business classes. Each is important to an individual student, and aren't all students at Plum important? I think it speaks volumes about this community. You have so many alums here and seniors, and we're not going to be affected at all by this decision, but we're standing here in front of you, trying to beg you to save these programs that are here. I don't know all the facts that are going on. You know, the newspaper says that the school board said that the teachers aren't working with them. Last week, the teachers were outraged and said, "That's not true." You know, they proposed a deal, and the school board said it wasn't enough. So like I said, I don't know all the facts, but to me, it seems like an outsider's view looking in is that it's one big high school. He said-
My name is Eric Albert, 324 Allegheny. I didn't have any pre-prepared remarks, but first of all, let me just say, I'm impressed that very few of you have taken your eyes off anybody that has stood up here and spoken tonight. So for me, I appreciate that amount of attention. But standing here or sitting here, it struck me that I don't know how we got here. And I was talking to one of our esteemed faculty from our regency just a few moments ago, and I said, I'm a corporate trainer, so I use analogies in my work, and I said, "I feel like I just got off a bus." But this bus is unique in that it's holding all of us, and the windows are black. We can't see outside. And we said, "Hey, let's get on this bus." And we got off the bus, and we said, "Where are we?" And we don't know where we are. So we asked the bus driver, which happens to be all of you, "How did we get here? We hired you to drive the bus, and here we are. We don't know where we are." And ironically, as I stand here and talk to you, you can't answer that very question. You can't tell me how we got here, and you can't tell me where we are. So I'm still flummoxed with how we're talking about cutting junior ROTC or language or home ec, if I can call it that for my day, or computer science. I just, I don't know how we're talking about these things. And hopefully, maybe by Thursday, when the progress comes out, I'll have an answer. But I will leave you with one thing that came to my mind, and that's Proverbs 22:6. Start children off on the way they should go, and even when they are old, they will not turn from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Albert.
Kyle Dawson, 607 Regency. I just want to start off by saying, reflecting on four numbers. First, the Make-A-Wish telethon has, in 13 years, has raised over $680,000 for Make-A-Wish. That's a lot of change, if you really think about it. The second number is per year, that's about $52,000, which is, again, a lot of change. Then the lip dub. It's, again, TV's bringing in a lot of your PR, bringing in a lot of your attention. So go to the lip dub, for example, and four times, four lip dubs, over 580,000 views. And the fourth number would be per year, that's approximately over 140,000 views. If you do what you're proposing to do in cutting all of these electives, what are you going to do when you have to send all of these kids to cyber? How much money is that going to cost? Because that's not in the budget. Because I feel like you haven't even looked at that. Like, what are you going to do when all these kids have to go to cyber? Or if they don't go to cyber, you're going to put, what, 300, 400 kids in one period in this auditorium for a study hall? Nothing's going to get done if you do that in a study hall of 300 kids. One of your goals on the website, and I saw this the day after the finance committee meeting last week, says that you're going to provide every student with one or more fields of endeavor to try to go into at high school. By cutting these electives, you're giving people three options: foreign language, art, and music. One or more fields of endeavor for every single student. How is three fields going to connect with everybody? November seems far away, but I'd like to at least start to close by saying everyone here, or at least every voter here, is going to know what to do in November if these cuts go through. Some of you will not be on the school board next time out. Some of you will be on the scoreboard. For example, people right now, like Mr. McGuff, Mrs. White, and Mr. St. Ledger, because they voted no last week to this, because apparently, and this might sound a little harsh, but apparently, to our view, those are the only three people on the board that actually completely care about the students and completely care about all these electives not being cut. I want to finish by going back to the quote I gave last week from Duke coach Mike Krzyzewski. An error is not a mistake until you choose not to correct it. Again, you've made the error by choosing to threaten to cut these programs and play with scissors, but you have the chance to correct it. Like I said last week, you still have a month. And I understand that you had to put the budget up for 30 days. It makes sense. I mean, all right, you had to put the budget up for 30 days, but that means you have 30 days in the rest of June and the rest of May to make your decision right before you make a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Evan Letrick. I live on 326 Ligonier Lane. I'm currently a senior here at Plum High School, and I'm here today to speak on the behalf of Television Productions and Business Education. I've taken Mr. Barat's Television Productions class for the past two years. I also have an older sibling who took it. In Television Productions, every year, we have our annual telethon for Make-A-Wish. This makes us the number-one provider in the world for Make-A-Wish. These two things alone promote, and we also have our lip dubs, which promote Plum, and they promote Plum in a good way and make people want to come here. Even though I'm not pursuing a major involving Television Productions, Television Productions has taught me communication skills by teaching me how to work, interact with people. This will help me in my major in college and in the future. I'd also like to add that Television Productions is accredited by Duquesne University. Three business education classes that I've taken here have also been accredited by CCAC. Those classes include Intro to Accounting, Financial Accounting, and International Business taught by Mr. Vitula. These classes have helped me more than any classes during my four years here at PHS. They've helped me pick my college major, which is Finance at Coastal Carolina University. Television Productions Business Education's classes have set me up to be successful with my future endeavors. I personally believe if the electives are cut, that you will hurt many students' futures and Plum Borough School District as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Evan.
Bernie Campbell, 167 Francis Road. Now, just take a few minutes. All I really want to know, I think all of us in the audience and even the school board would realize the educational effect of what we're talking about here. What I'd like to, and we all agree that this would have a devastating effect on the education of our children, what I'd like to talk about is the economic impact this would have. And what I'd like to know is, everybody in the audience, if you purchased your house in Plum Borough because one of the main reasons was the school district, raise your hand. School board, feel free to raise your hand, too. Okay? Instead of cutting the programs, we should be adding more programs. If you look at property values, property values are based on the, one of the biggest impact of property values is the educational system. Changes in education take a long time to surface. The changes you make today will not, will be living on our reputation for the next five years, but five years from now, our reputation will not be what it is. There are developments going in Plum Borough everywhere. People want to move to Plum Borough. It's not because we have good roads. It's not because we have great parks. It's not because we have easy access from a highway. The reason why they want to come here is because of the school district. You cannot cut the school district. I'm all for paying less taxes. I'm all for doing more with less. But instead of cutting the budget, instead of looking for places to save money in order to cut teachers' salary or teachers' programs and cut the educational experience, we should be reducing the budget and adding two things, not taking them away. Okay? This is going to affect all of our property values. Okay? These decisions are not just educational. And I applaud everybody who stood up here for the education aspect, because I could stand here and talk about my daughter and the things that she would be missing, and I have a younger, I have an 11th grader, a 9th grader, and a 7th grader, and I could tell you about all the things that they're missing. But one girl stood up here and said not to look at the money. I want you to look at the money. I want you to look at the dollars. I want you to understand that our property values go up every single year. We've gone through the biggest recession in real estate in the last 10 years, and our property values are still going up. I figured out, I lived in Plum Borough for 18 years. I figured out the taxes I've paid. My property values have gone up, have far exceeded the taxes. So you can't do this. Okay? This is something that's going to affect our property values and the way we live in Plum Borough. We chose to live here because of the school district. So I would just like to say that we can't do this. Simple.
Thank you. Thanks for calling us, Mr. Campbell.
Julie Frank, 208 Boys Park Drive. I would like to talk about the decision to not replace the elementary band position after Mr. Summers retired. I just finished my third year as a music student at Baldwin Wallace Conservatory Music in Cleveland, Ohio. I'm a trumpet performance major, and there is no way that I would have this career path without Mr. Summers in band in elementary school. If you do not replace this program, the students of Plum Borough will have no opportunity to pick up a band instrument until 7th grade. Not only is that cutting out one-third of their potential musical education in this district, it is also really narrowing down the amount of students that are actually going to play an instrument. When I was in 4th grade, when I was in 3rd grade, at the end of the year, Mr. Summers came down with some instruments and had us try them, and then we decided if we wanted to play something the following year. My school, which attracts students from all over the world, there are students from as far as Japan, and it's very competitive. Most of those students have parents and grandparents and generations who have played instruments, so when they were born, they were given an instrument. I was not. I'm the first one in my family to play an instrument. So if Mr. Summers hadn't brought down those instruments in 4th grade, there's no way I'd be playing an instrument right now. And I think by waiting until 7th grade, there's not going to be many students who all of a sudden decide that they're going to play an instrument already halfway through their This may seem like an innocent decision and an easy way of finding a way to balance the budget, to just not replace a position as it's being vacated. You don't have to cut a position. But really, what you're doing by cutting the first step of a music program is you're going to cut the whole, you're going to cut the whole music program by the time the kids, by the time the kids that are currently in elementary school, when they get to seniors, that's the end of your music program. And I appreciate that you applaud their efforts in the Gene Kelly Awards and nominated for Best Orchestra. That's not going to happen again without this program. Up at school, I volunteer with a group called the New Horizons Bands, which is a group for older adults who didn't have the chance to play an instrument before, and we teach them how to play instruments. And every single one of them has told all of us numerous times that they wish they had had the chance to play music when they were younger, and then they really envy us, our education. And what I see that you're doing with Plum is you're going to create a whole nother generation of these older adults who wish they had a better education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back, Julie, sharing your perspective.
Okay, I'm going to be brief. My name's Karen Hamilton. I'm from 122 Duquesne Boulevard. You all know my daughter is in the BCMC program, and I was also very saddened to hear that it didn't pass the budget. She has now told me that she will go to cyber school, and she will pick the most expensive one she can find, but hopefully, she won't have to do that, and she will be able to go to BCMC. However, in the meantime, she has been asked to fill out a new schedule, and no one has told us what's going to happen to her when she goes to high school, or what's going to happen to these kids that need this program. No one. So she's just going to go to school and just go to the regular classes that she had before that she didn't succeed at? I just don't think that's right. That's not going to work, and that's not going to work for 17 or 30 of these kids from BCMC. What, as I asked before, what are you going to do with these kids? And why haven't I heard from anyone about what we are going to do with these kids? These kids cannot function in this huge school. They can't do it. They've been bullied. They haven't been able to succeed because they don't get enough education from being in a class of 30 kids? I still haven't heard, I'm still waiting for an answer, what are you going to do with these kids? What? I'm still waiting. Okay? And as for the music program for Mr. Summers, I agree. It should be replaced. I am a graduate of 1979 Plum High School. I was in the Plum High School Musical. I was the lead in the musical, and I wouldn't have been in the music program if I didn't know I could sing when I was 10. And I did have music class, and I did have Dr. Popovich come and play his violin for us, and how beautiful and wonderful it was to hear him play. And I'm a little bit late this evening because I was at the Monroeville Junior High Awards, where my granddaughter goes to school, and they had a cello player and two clarinettas playing that were only 14 years old, and they were beautiful. And those kids won several awards. So if you do away with the music program, what are our kids going to be? Nothing. I chose to live here because my daughter, I wanted my daughter to have a great education as I did, but I'm going to choose to leave Plum. I'm going to choose to leave if I have to. I don't want to, because I love it here, but there's no opportunity for her and there's no opportunity for my grandchildren to stay here, which they are all musically inclined as well. But I'm still waiting to hear what we're going to do with the kids from BCMC that can't function in a large environment. Still waiting. Don't hear anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi. I'm Meg Frank, 208 Boys Park Drive. I want to talk to you about your vision for our school district. All these kids have been coming up, and they talked about their passion. All three of my children got their passion from this school. I didn't go to Plum Borough. I went to a small Catholic school that kind of died out. It didn't have a vision. Enrollment dropped. Things became a joke. By the time I graduated, I knew of everything my older sisters and cousins had that I didn't have, and it just dwindled. That's a Catholic. This school will not go away. We will always have public education. But what is your vision for this school? You are looking at cutting out all the programs that give the kids a passion. My kids had that passion, and they have a vision for their future. I don't have to worry about it. I have to help pay for it. I have to help make sure they stay on track, but they know where they want to go. You take away those programs, they don't have that vision anymore. They lose that passion that everyone has talked about. I also worked for the AIU for years and went into other school districts in Pittsburgh and, without naming names, they have these beautiful buildings, trophy cases of very old trophies. You say, "Well, we used to have this. We used to have this." The enrollment dropped. The surrounding communities are crumbling, and it makes me sad. And I think, what was that tipping point? What turned that community around? I know it's more than the school district that turns a community around. Economics is a big factor, but what would be our tipping point where we go from a grade school district to all the things we used to have? As a tax, my youngest is a freshman. He'll be out of here in three years. He could find enough electives because he likes music to get by, but I'm also a taxpayer. I would like to stay here, but I don't want to be stuck with a house that's, value decreases because we lost our vision, we lost any kind of passion in our schools. We hit that tipping point. You are looking at cutting out all the programs that give the kids a passion. My kids had that passion, and they have a vision for their future. I don't have to worry about it. I have to help pay for it. I have to help make sure they stay on track, but they know where they want to go. You take away those programs, they don't have that vision anymore. They lose that passion that's everyone has talked about. I also worked for the IU, AIU for years, and went into other school districts in Pittsburgh and, without naming names, they have these beautiful buildings, trophy cases of very old trophies. You say, "Well, we used to have this. We used to have this." The enrollment dropped, the surrounding communities are crumbling, and it makes me sad. And I think, what was that tipping point? What turned that community around? I know it's more than a school district that turns a community around. Economics is a big factor, but what would be our tipping point, where we go from a great school district to all the things we used to have? As a tax, my, my youngest is a freshman. He'll be out of here in three years. He could find enough electives because he likes music to get by, but I'm also a taxpayer. I would like to stay here, but I don't want to be stuck with a house that's, value decreases because we lost our vision, we lost any kind of passion in our schools. We hit that tipping point this year when we cut all these electives out. You want the course, here's the course. That's not what education's about. Okay? I also teach English, and my school district, luckily, has all these electives. I have low-level kids in English class who come every day, do well in English because they gotta get to woodshop, and they have to go to metal shop. That's their passion. I can teach them English. We hit the marks on the Keystone. We hit the marks with the PSSA, but they're, I have them there because their passion is to be in school for these programs. You cut out these programs, you're losing that for these kids, and I'm afraid that this year's gonna be our tipping point for Plumboro. I do not want our school district to be a joke. Cutting computers after 6th grade, I mean, that's a joke. That's an absolute joke to think we have no technology above 6th grade. So please, your decision, whether you stay on this board this year or you stay on for years to come, will affect all our tax, all our house values, will affect our kids' education, and will affect our whole community. So you have to think seriously about these things. Think of your vision. Where do you, where do you see us in the years to come?
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Frank.
Good evening. My name is Chad Eckert. My address is 7201 Raymond Street. My father spoke about an hour ago, and I'm thankful for the kind comments that he had, and I also wanted to thank you for the hard work. I, when I was driving over here, I was thinking to myself, I really don't envy the situation you're in. You have some tough decisions to make, and given the economic climate, you probably will have some more difficult situations in the year to come. But I've been here tonight, listening to passionate parents and students and teachers. I've had a change in heart, and that is, I, I do wish that I was sitting where you're sitting, because you have the opportunity tonight and in the next month to rise to a major challenge and overcome that challenge. I know some of the board members personally, and I know of some of other board members as well. And from what I know, that when faced with adversity, you don't bow down and, and accept, but you persevere on and push through. And again, you're in an opportunity now where you can be the school board that can make a difference and take this problem and resolve it, and make something positive from it, and be a school board that has a lasting legacy. I work two different jobs. One of them is at the University of Pittsburgh. I'm a professor. I teach a freshman engineering class through the Department of Bioengineering and Freshman Engineering. I have the opportunity to teach and work with students from all over the country. Class size is about 90 a semester. It's a little bit daunting, but I can tell you the students that have had exceptional educations coming in and are prepared for the challenges that the undergraduate experience has to offer, and these students end up doing exceptionally well. They are leaps and bounds above students in terms of presentation skills and analytical skills, more than just the basic math and science. Those students clearly have come from good school districts, things that 10 years ago, when I was a student, I can say I had the opportunity to be awarded with while, while I was at Plum. Finally, I also work at the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center in the Artificial Heart Program. We work with heart transplants and artificial hearts. And oftentimes, when we're in eight-hour heart transplants, or when I am working with a child with a congenital heart defect who may be dying in the hospital, one of the things I ask myself is, if I know what I know now, how could I have changed the decision I made previously? And I leave you with that thought tonight, that you have the opportunity, especially after hearing some of these eloquent comments, to use this information to hopefully inform your decision that you'll be making, so that you don't regret the, the, the choice that you may be making. Thank you very much, and I really hope you consider these thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad.
Non-agenda items? Motion to adjourn? A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Do you think we should get some comments? I mean, these folks spent all night with us.
We're adjourned.
You know. I, I think it's important that they understand, as a board, you know, what we go through. Let me give you an example. You know, we, we have to be student advocates. I don't think there's one person on this board that's not a student advocate. But here's what looms on the horizon for this school district and everything across the strait, state. Over the past three years, a billion dollars has been cut out of school district funding. It's a huge number. This year, this year alone, the state's revenues are falling short by $500 million. That's gonna trickle down to us next year. And most importantly, the unemployment rate in our state now exceeds the national average. That's the first time in five years. Things are changing in the state. Now, this isn't financial planning. This is all about the future. And as a student advocate, we have to understand that. But on the other hand, we're a fiduciary, and if you don't understand what that term means, look under Black's Law Dictionary. It'll tell you what we do. So we have to take everything into account. You know, I'm never disappointed by optimism. I come to these meetings every, every month. I've been coming here for six years. I've gone to every education committee meeting, and I'm never, ever disappointed by optimism. But it's increasingly clear to me that as a citizen, as a citizen, that one, two, $5 million tax increases are fingers in the dike. The root cause analysis isn't that. The only way out of this budgetary issue is to negotiate. All the stakeholders have to come together and negotiate, and we'll solve it. It isn't gonna be solved by this board alone. Thanks for your time.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.
Thank you for your attendance tonight and your comments. We appreciate it.